The Newburyport Public Schools are committed to the intellectual, physical, social development and engagement of every student. Within a culture of high expectations for individual and group learning, our students experience rigorous academic challenge and are intellectually curious and express themselves creatively. Our students enhance their well-being by applying knowledge and skills about nutrition, and health, fitness, and healthy behaviors. Our schools are an inclusive and supportive community. As part of this community, our students demonstrate values of personal integrity, sensitivity, and social responsibility. Our schools partner with parents and community in significant ways to help achieve this mission. Members of our school community, teachers, parents, staff, and administration, support this mission every day, in every classroom, on every field of play, and in every activity.
Before we go to the public comment, I think that Steve Collett could ask for...
Yes. I'd like to take a moment to remember Mr. Thomas Palumbo Esquire. Mr. Palumbo recently passed away at his home in Salisbury late last week. He was a respected local attorney, a respected state representative who served for five terms in the 2nd Essex District. He also was a graduate of Newburyport High School class of 1968, a standout football player on the teams of that era, notably the 1967 undefeated Clipper team. He went on to attend Temple University on a football scholarship. But what was most memorable to people like me who were students here at Newburyport High School and others in the community was when he returned to Newburyport High School as a substitute teacher while he was earning his law degree at Suffolk University. Tom had a big heart. Since being on the school committee, he and I kind of had this agreement that he always said to me, "Steve, if there's ever any kids who need a pair of cleats and can't afford them, you let me know and we'll get them the cleats." So from that student who needed a pair of cleats and Mr. Palumbo got them for him to all the folks that he played a part in their lives, he'll be sorely missed. I just wanted to take a moment of silence on his behalf.
Thank you, Steve. We start with our first period of public comment. Was there anybody who is here tonight who would like to share anything with us? A public comment is usually, it's going up, give us your name and address, and we don't usually respond to public comment, but is there anybody here who has anything to offer? There will be another period of public comment. All right, thank you. If we could move to the consent agenda. Do we have any warrants?
We're full.
We have plenty of warrants.
I move that the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate to $265,077.81 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There's a conflict with the mayor, that's the employer.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
One present.
I move that the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate to $81,753.87 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I move that the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate to $2,494.00 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
That's it. Do we have any minutes?
I need to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting from Monday, August 8th, 2011.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any changes, additions, subtractions, directions, opinions? Think of, Deirdre has some changes she is going to request because we have numerous, numerous conversations.
On page three of the minutes, under motions, on a motion made by Mayor Holliday, and seconded by Dan Keon, it was voted to approve the RFS for the OPM of the Brezner Hand Elementary School building project, and what needs to be added is and authorize it for advertisement.
Does anybody like to add that?
Motion to add the amendment of adding advertisement...
And authorize it for advertisement.
...
Clearly, the RFS in it states that it will be advertised, but the motion to approve the RFS must contain and authorize it for advertisement according to the checkers from MSBA.
Second. Thank you. I'd like to thank the MSBA for checking us from our sounds. Any discussion? Hearing none. Are there other changes in those same minutes?
Not in the same minutes, yes. That was the Brezner Hand, the same update for the NOC.
All in favor of that change?
Aye.
Okay, second change.
Motion to add authorization for advertisement to the motion for the OPM for Mullen.
Second. Ms. Weaver, second. Any discussion? All in favor of amending the minutes to account for this little anomaly?
Aye.
Opposed? We now have amended minutes before us. Are there any additional amendments, changes? None, all in favor of the minutes as amended? Say aye. One present. Any other minutes? Hearing none, we are into the business of the day. Turn it over to Mr. Mark. Your request?
Item number six, request for the high school gym use on Sunday, November 6th, 2011. You have in your packet a waiver request from Mike Lawrence from Local Sports, the race director, to use the Newburyport gym. There's going to be a large all-women's race, road race, on aisle number six.
Which is all women and one crazy guy, or one lucky guy.
That's right. A half marathon that starts in Newburyport and runs through West Newbury and back. The race is already approved by the City of Newburyport, the Newburyport Police, and the town of West Newbury. The gym will be used for runners to register, pick up their race packets and shirts, to sit around and stretch before the race. It's, you know, half marathon, marathons are, you know, these are long events, they're 13.1 miles, and running on a Sunday morning makes it safer for the runners. For those of us that understand what the race is like, and that you're homecoming, the crowds, everything else, I think Sunday morning is probably the best choice that Mike is going to run. On Saturday, the day before, there's going to be a healthy community expo in the gym, and that's open to the public. So I'm recommending that the school committee support the use of the high school gym, Sunday, November 6th, from 6:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Do we have a motion enough?
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question for Mike. How do you pick the one guy?
It's a lottery. So males can enter, they pay $5 to enter, and then at the end is 200 numbers, and my daughter picks a random number, 1 to 200, and we scroll down and we pick that person. And then we call that person and see if they, if they still want to compete, because sometimes their girlfriend enters them, or their spouse or somebody. And then they get to run and they get to be, you know, the one lucky guy for a day. And all the money goes to the track team, usually the cross-country team, so.
He's a lucky guy, he becomes the last.
I just want to say, in terms of Local Sports, they run really tight events, they do a really great job, very well organized, I've run in a couple of new races, so speaking of experience, I think this is a great thing.
Hey, Mayor Hall.
I agree. I think this is a wonderful opportunity for our city to take place in an event like this, and I thank you so much for organizing this. My only concern is 6:00 a.m. is very early, and I just would ask that either there be something publicized in the local paper, or you might want to just the homes immediately adjacent to the high school, because we've had issues with neighbors being concerned about activities in the gym early on, on the weekends, and I just think out of courtesy to them, and you have plenty of time between now and November, to just maybe leaflet or put flyers up, top in High Street in front, maybe they're, you know, really immediate neighbors, just so that they're aware of what's going on in case they don't get the daily news.
Yeah, we do a three-stage process. We submit something in a PowerPoint to your local public television station to put on that, and then we do something in the local newspapers typically, and then a week before, we'll put signs up on the road, all along the course, so that people know that it's coming, and typically, you know, people see those signs, it's on their street, and it's quite often, you know, road race coming, certain things. So we're very happy to be here in Newburyport, and we want the residents to know ahead of time, because they're pre-armed with that knowledge, then they're, then they're a lot happier residents.
Absolutely, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Just one other question, probably a two or whatever. Does the race actually start? What do you mean? Is that correct?
10 o'clock.
Oh, 10 o'clock, sorry. Let me do that here.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments?
Can I just ask a question about bathroom facilities? What facilities are going to plan to be used? Will it be porta-potties, will it strictly be the internal, or the facilities within the school? Anybody know?
Any delicate questions, but certainly not.
Toilet facilities, Mike?
What's the question, I'm sorry?
Do you have porta-potties?
What facilities?
We basically are just going to use the gym, and that's it.
Well, bathrooms in there.
Yeah, just always going to the gym and back out again, and provide our own porta-potties, wherever the administration tells us to put them, and as little impact as possible on the inside of the school, we'll cordon off where we don't want people to go, and it's all women, they usually listen to us and go exactly where we tell them. Men aren't always like that, like that.
How many runners are you anticipating?
We're going to count the race at 1,200.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that 1,200 plus one, or is that about?
Yeah, and then one male, yeah.
I just want to be sure. Any other questions? Hearing none, let's, question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, suspensions, federates?
Thank you very much.
Okay, next one?
Yeah, the next, the next is the mental health proposal, I think, is that Beacon Coalition?
Right. So this, I would ask for Karen Grant to come to the table with Chris Powless and Beth Fuller... I mean, I've got twenty of them, sorry. And so, the purpose of this agenda, right, is to form the school committee about a proposal to the superintendent from the mental health stat team, and I'd ask Karen Grant to speak on the app. Karen?
Thank you. This has been an exciting project to sit on. Last fall, I was approached by Beth and Chris to form a mental health stat team to take a look at one specific objective, to explore ways to reduce barriers for our students to access mental health services. This is part of a grant that the city was awarded, the Drug-Free Communities Grant, and the first year of the grant was simply to explore what barriers exist and how to overcome them. How do we provide or overcome the barriers to accessing mental health services for our students? So we formed a committee made up of Beacon Coalition volunteers, our school mental health staff, some administrators, myself, and we met monthly to explore what barriers exist for our youth and families to gain access to individual and family-based mental health services. Over the course of the year, we met with mental health providers in the area, some of our local mental health providers joined our committee, and we surveyed our school nurses and all of our district mental health staff to determine what the needs were of our students. The recommendation to the superintendent is that we, the Newburyport Public Schools, partner with Health and Education Services, HES, to provide onsite, fee-based, mental health services at the NOC and Mullen schools as our pilot, and at the Learning and Richman Center off-campus. And the committee has formed a proposal that I believe I included in your packets that you were able to see. HES was one of two to three agencies that we interviewed and considered. They do this with other districts in our area, they have a comprehensive packet, they provide all of the paperwork, they do all of the third-party billing of families' insurance. We will put in place a referral process for our school psychologists and counselors to refer students that they feel may be in need of further mental health services, and then HES takes it from there. All that they require from us is a space in our building. There's no fee to the Newburyport Public Schools, they do all of the billing independently. We have secured a space in the NOC-Mullen building, and we've agreed to pilot this after school from the hours of 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. There was a strong feeling from the committee not to take children out of classes to receive these services. So this will be available between 2:00 and 4:00 p.m. on our campus, and then the counselor will leave and go to the Learning and Richman Center and continue services from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. for those students in that, in that area. So this will be a pilot. I envision that the committee will continue meeting throughout the next school year to evaluate its success and problem-solve any concerns that come forward. Anything that I'm missing or that you would like to add?
We had a great group of people.
We did.
We did. We had a lot of interesting discussions, but I think you've covered most of the, most of the hot topics. Are there any questions or concerns?
Well, not really questions or concerns, because having been involved with the Beacon Coalition for, since its inception, and having worked on same-school self and students grants, where we really tried to build in this mental health component, and have been working with HES for many years, trying to get them into our school system, because I think we all recognize that this is a very important need, and there are students who just can't access the services outside of, you know, the school being, you know, sort of a resource to bring you two together. I think it's absolutely critical, and I'm thrilled that we're finally here, a long, long time overdue in terms of providing these services, because we know that our school psychologists and our guidance counselors are very, very limited in terms of the kinds of support, and they don't do therapy, this isn't the kind of work that they can do, so I'm thrilled that we're finally being able to bring new services into the schools. The one question I have, I understand that this is a pilot, so is your goal to be able to expand to the high school after the first year?
High school in Brezner Hand.
Okay, so what should happen in the event that someone identifies potentially a high school student who hears of this program and would like to, you know, partake?
I don't think we're going to turn anyone away. I think what we would do at that time is determine how we can provide services to that student. Would that student come from the high school, to the NOC-Mullen billing, to the, to the space that we've secured, or will we be able to get additional staff to service the high school? I think we'll take it on a case-by-case basis. I don't think we want to turn anyone away, but the bulk of the availability seem to be at the NOC-Mullen building, as well as the space and the timing of the dismissal and the late bus to be able to provide transportation for parents who can't pick up.
And it was also, excuse me, but it was also HES's recommendation to start at the lower age range.
At one side.
You know, to start it off.
And just one follow-up is that sometimes if you have just one therapist who's identified from HES as our school-based therapist, if you will, and what if that doesn't necessarily fit? Say, for example, if you had an individual with post-traumatic stress, or OCD, or something that isn't necessarily the experience or expertise of that individual therapist, will they be able to reach out and bring in additional therapists into the, to, you know, sort of match the students? Or it just isn't working? You know, sometimes what happens to a therapist and the student just don't, you know?
I would hope that to be the case. I don't know the specific answer.
I don't know that we have the answer to that yet, but that would be the hope. With HES and all the providers that they have in our area, that would be the hope. That was something that was discussed with Pam when we talked about this, but initially, how it starts off, you know, but she, Pam is very willing and open to, you know, working with the community, and I think that she's going to do whatever she can to make this work for the students and for the school system.
Part of the research that we did too was surveying all of our current mental health providers and school nurses, and one of the pieces of the survey was to identify the issues and trends that we're seeing as needs for our students. So I'm hoping that we can take that data, combine it, and, well, Chris has already done that, he's already analyzed all of the data into a nice summary, we can share that with HES and say, "These are the needs of Newburyport Public Schools, can you match us with a therapist with these specific skills?"
And the YRBS and Search Institute survey, is that where you're getting that data from? Part, that was part of the information that we looked at, and then we also developed our own questionnaire that Karen talked about with the school and mental health providers. Wonderful job, thank you. Thank you.
This may sound like a silly question, it sounds wonderful, it's a great thing, but has the committee agreed on the metrics in terms of how you'll measure if this is successful in terms of looking at a pilot? Like, have you, have you talked about that?
We, we listed out several things that suggested that we could look at, but that's one, and I'll have you, but that's one of the things that the Coalition does, is we look at measurable, measurable data. So we have a best interest in this being successful and watching for those successes. Go ahead, I'm sorry, do you want me to give you specifics, second? I'll have to dig into my...
No, it's okay, I just, I'm looking for...
I guess a question, these are the possible ones. When you know which the actual ones are that you're going to be measuring, what are your objectives going to be in those, in those particular metrics? And will you be sharing those metrics with us as soon as you have them, so we know what you're, what you're shooting for?
I mean, some of the most honorable ones are watching our YRBS and our Search Institute data, those are annual surveys that alternate. So we'd be looking sort of long-term at those for the kids that are getting it in the middle, in the middle school, and how that impacts their continuation through high school, their completion of high school, and how those numbers fit the asset model. Short-term, we're looking to do it within three to six months, have sort of reconvene and reevaluate, and see how the program's been running for the school staff and for the therapist.
It's just some of these things that I see, you, you're not going to see things like this happen in a short amount of time, do you know what I mean? So I think to come back to us and say, "This is working, it's great, I'm just curious what kind of information you'd be able to see at that point," you know?
I think initially, we'll be looking at participation, and, you know, whether, whether students are finding it, you know, what the...
The feedback.
The feedback that we're getting.
And feedback from our staff as well, and that's why the committee agreed to reconvene for the upcoming year to take a look at some of that progress monitoring data.
I guess, you know, it's hard to reach objectives unless you measure, that's one of the things that I like about Beacon, is that it is database, it does use their data approach very nicely. As I'm looking forward here, I think there seem to be things that are in place for long-term tracking of the program, but I, what I'm hearing is that more than a pilot, this is the first phase of a rolled-out approach, because there, unless something goes terribly wrong, the, the next step is to expand to the high school in the Brezner. It's not, it's not waiting for data to be able to define if or not we're going to go to the Brezner.
I think following HES's recommendation, our goal was to start small, and do it right, and do it well, before we expanded and spread ourselves too thin and couldn't deliver quality service to our students.
And that's right, I think that's, that's a great strategy, I'm not questioning the strategy, I just, I guess I wouldn't call it a pilot as much as I call it a roll-on.
Paradigm.
And then, I'm not confused about these possible metrics that are, well, we need to make a decision in three months, where we're not going to have the results of this until three years from now, that's where it would...
Well, we'll have qualitative data, like the feedback from the staff and likely the participants, and if the participation increases past the allotted four spaces that we had initially. So I mean, if participation increases and everyone's happy and, and the kids are, I mean, you could even measure it on their grades from quarter to quarter, if they're, if they're, you know, more engaged and the teachers are saying, you know, noticing changes, those are short-term.
That's great, I just, I would like to have those stated.
Sure.
I think they're, they're very valid, very valid approaches, and, you know, for this kind of a decision, I think these qualitative approaches are, are very valid. Let's, let's just say that that's what they're going to be.
Yeah. Is there any questions or comments?
I know this, I'm, I'm looking at your, your proposal, your fee for service mental health, and the last bullet says hardship financial issues that reduce the likelihood of a parent or caregiver having transportation and other resources to seek out traditional office. I know this is fee-based, how does that happen for a student or a family who doesn't have the money to pay the fee?
The, the fee-based is our, is our insurance plan. So HES takes all but one type of insurance that's in Massachusetts, including Mass Health. So those, when we say fee-based in this genre, that's what we're talking about is...
So if someone doesn't have insurance, it doesn't preclude them from getting help?
It shouldn't, because they should be, we should be able to, HES should be able to support them in the process to getting Mass Health.
I've also touched base with some local organizations that have said if there's families who, who could really benefit from this, but, but don't have insurance and could really use the program, they'd be willing to work with the family. So as it gets closer to that game.
That one sounds great.
So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I just actually had a question, as you have to hold mine to the end. I'm strongly supporting this program, I've been interested in seeing a program like this for about 10 years, I would say, actually. And I just want to, I just do have a couple of questions, though, one of them you've already answered, that if a family can't come up with a co-pay, that you just, maybe you're going to work with that family and maybe people stepping in, which was one of my concerns. And the second question that I had is that the use of the space is going to be limited to HES therapists, local private therapists are not going to have access to that space. And I wonder, and I, it's just, it's a question, there are a range of issues that kids are being challenged by, some of which HES does not have people on staff who are qualified. In that event, or in any other event, will there be referrals to outside local therapists who have those specialties?
I can't talk about the, the referral process through the school, but what I can tell you out of, out of this group is that that was one of the things that we were considering, and how diff, the challenges and how difficult it is for families to find the right therapist. So in that, there's been kind of a renewed effort to reach out to the counselors and gather information together, so that our school staff can have the resources to at least be able to say, "This therapist works in this genre, and this therapist does this," and...
Outside the HES network.
Yeah. Now, could you speak a little bit to the breakfast that the Coalition has hosted, and how you network out to local providers to...
Sure, that's another one of my...
That it's just another way that we can get local providers in our database and find out what their specialty are, and then we would have that resource to refer those students.
I believe all but one year of the grant, we have run a therapist luncheon, where we invite the schools' therapists, as well as all the therapists within our area that we have names and addresses for. And so we do have a pretty good database of people who have come and participated. We've done different workshops at different times, and allowed them some networking time, but have also introduced the 40 assets to them, and what the Coalition is doing this year, and all sorts of different things. I'm blanking on her name.
Linda May Lucas.
Linda May Lucas took that and expanded on it, and is now doing it twice a year, which is, which is great. And so some of, you know, some of these things are beginning to grow, and so that, it, that ties into this as well, I think, as well.
Right, we'll have a database of our local providers and what their areas of specialty are, so that if we do come across an issue that we can't meet through this HES partnership, we... have resources to refer students outside of this.
But I would be interested in hearing when the next breakfast or luncheon is.
Do we have a date yet?
We don't have a specific date. I'm actually working with Peter Holtz right now because we'd like to host it at the school to encourage school therapists to come and get to know some of the local community members.
I've been contacted by therapists who don't hear from the schools in those areas of specialization. I know...
That was one of the questions in our questionnaire was how is the connection to the community therapists? It was pretty low. So that's one of our goals following into the next year is to increase that integration.
Once that data's set, Bruce, I'll be sure to let you know.
Absolutely. I'll also circulate that very much. That's very, very encouraging, I feel.
I just want to thank Karen, Beth, and Chris. I don't, maybe I didn't hear, but you mentioned the names of the other people on your staff team, Karen?
No, but I...
We didn't, but we can.
I think it would be nice.
I remind you, Linda May Lucas, Ronna Rosenblatt, Maggie Flaherty, Beverly Hines Lacy, Aileen Savage Cretin, Karen, Peter Holtz. And Nancy Earls was not able to attend most of our meetings, but she was included in, we kept her updated as we went along, and she wasn't able to attend a couple of meetings. But so she's on board with this.
She's also offered her facility so that the services can continue into the evening once students are released from school, so that those residents in her neighborhood have access right in their neighborhood to these services.
There's a principle, there's a principle that's been emerging in a lot of the conversations about healthcare reform called the wrong door, that whatever door you go into, you can get where you need to go. And it seems to me that the schools are now becoming a piece of that, which I think is tremendous.
Well, and part of this, for me, I feel like hopefully we'll look forward to this. It sounds like we're going to, but it puts us a little bit ahead of her with Rosie D. and some of the questions that I'm seeing coming out of the DOE. I think that schools are going to be asked to next year, the year after, to start looking at this, and we're already looking at it. It puts us ahead of the curve.
Is there an action?
No actions, just a recommendation and to update you on what we've done this past year.
Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Next item on the agenda is the job title change, and I'm going to turn that over to Beth Kerbel.
Thank you. Thank you, Bruce. And I'm just going to talk, I'm just going to, once you get going, I'll get on a pretty good roll. So I want to talk about this job title change. I'm Director of Curriculum to Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction. I feel I have an extremely strong team of Assistant Superintendent Deidre Farrell, Angela Bick, Karen Brandt. And if we spend a moment thinking and talking about our Assistant Superintendent, I've talked at length about the kind of work that she's been doing with MSBA and the Building Committee and the kind of work that she has done in the area of facilities, especially in the area of budget and personnel. And so Deidre has quite the load. And I'm very fortunate to have someone like Deidre being an Assistant Superintendent. I have another member of the team that also has quite the load. And this particular person is responsible for curriculum instruction, assessment, professional development, grants, and so on. So what you have in your packet is you have multiple pages of the work that Angela Bick has in many different categories and the fact, kind of categories that we use for evaluating and so on. And so I think what has happened years ago, when they had a position of Director, the Director had finite responsibilities and finite power. Okay? And over the years, it just keeps growing. And so if you look at all of the activities and responsibilities that Angela does and has, and I mentioned, my next comment has to do with something that I said to one of you, that I said that I could think of only a few people that can do the kinds of things that Angela does. One, I said, is a superintendent in Foxborough, a good friend of mine, and I know her work. The second person is the person who used to be the Assistant Superintendent in Winchester, and I'm sure you can figure out who he was. And so I have a sense of what it takes. And so to keep, I want to have a strong team to lead the district in a way that we can reach our potential. And so, and so, you know, why the change in the title? And so in your packet, there's things that I have written, which I'm going to read some excerpts from it, and also highlight some of the responsibilities. So, you know, as leaders, everyone works for us. And, but the responsibility for a lot of things, it bears on the actual leader. So giving you just an example, today and tomorrow, we have a duck program for new teachers. And who puts it all together? Who's responsible? Angela. We have a two-day leadership retreat Wednesday and Thursday. We have a leadership orientation, and I oversee it. I'm trying to build activities for day one. Angela's building the second day. And not only that, is preparing for the full professional day, which is next week. And so that just gives you, and we're just talking about a two-week, you know, something happens over two weeks. Angela's responsible for all the meetings and plans for her Curriculum Advisory Board meetings, and she plans technology group meetings. She has coaches that she has to oversee. She's responsible for the Title I program. I was responsible for the Title I program in Winchester. Okay? That in itself usually has its own director, so I know what that takes. Works with the literacy coaches, the math coaches, the technology specialists, coordinates and manages eight district grants. Okay? Now, throw on top, we've got the new Race to the Top grant, and I'm going to talk about that in a few minutes. And we have all these partnership grants with EBC, our Business Coalition, responsible for that, responsible to make sure that our science coach works well with our teachers. So who should be, who's the, excuse me, who is the McKinney-Vento Homeless Liaison? Angela. Who looks at all the homeschool plans? Angela. And so if she, we'll put it this way, if she couldn't do it, she was sick. You know who would do it? Who knows how to do it? The superintendent. Do I want to check all homeschool plans? I'd love to, but I'd rather have Angela. She also, how many times we've got a presentation here from Gomi? So who's the liaison to Gomi? Who is getting things going? And then, you know, that's Angela. We've seen her at forums, much like Deidre. We've seen her at the foreign language ad hoc committee, serves on the science speaker series, technology ad hoc committees. I'd say if you go through the pages that follow, all right, you can get worn out talking about the kinds of work that she does. So if I think about some things that's coming up, I think about this new evaluation system that the Department of, or DESE, has just passed. And we have a regulation that requires a new evaluation system for teachers administrators and superintendents to be implemented 2012, 2013. I'm responsible for the training, the oversight, and the implementation of that regulation. Angela is involved in conversations already with two consultants. I think I put that in my latest email to you in the loop. And so you know that she's going to be involved with the training and the planning for that. A major piece of Race to the Top has to do with a new Common Core curriculum. It has to be distributed, implemented, trained, overseen for fidelity. Okay? So you know, well, we know Angela will have to do that. So I said, I think that what I wanted this year is I wanted our X2 portal for parents to be opened up. I said, Angela, I want to see it happen. That she was involved with that. Professional development, that in itself is a major job. She, you know, pulled off five days with Andrew Chin, who's training all of our third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade teachers and sixth to eighth math teachers. That's five days. And we also have to work in all the substitutes to cover the classes. She's responsible for that. I think I've covered, let's see, one of the things that Angela does exceptionally well is has effective relationships with the community. So she's the one, when we talk about gift and talent education, you know, it's Angela. I asked her to meet with community members who are interested in talking about particular programs, whether it's math, whether it's philosophy. And we just had a meeting with that particular person. Angela sits on that meeting. I asked her to come and sit on the meeting. We had talked about green science, okay, at the trails. So you could see, we're getting a little bit even worn out just listening to all the things that she has to do. Okay? One of the things I was asked would be, well, can you take some of the responsibilities and give it to someone else? Much like Deidre, Angela's no. Deidre's got her load, and we don't take anything away. You're going to do, if Deidre has to spend all day, today, tomorrow, and probably Thursday to get ready for MSBA, but we don't take anything away from her. All right? It's the same with Angela. You know, nothing is taken away when you're a leader. You just get the added responsibilities. Okay? And so it's much like Deidre, walk the dog, come in and do your work. Okay? For someone like Angela, it is go home, feed her husband, come back, and yo, go home, he feeds her. And then come back and get your work done. This is what a strong team is all about. Okay? And this is what the district needs. I recommend, I know, one of the things that you brought to my attention is you said you need to be able to look at central office and figure out what's best for central office in the district. You actually, you actually rated me on that. And so now I'm coming back to you and I'm saying, this is what I need. I need you to change the title, and you need to vote on this. Change the title from the Director of Curriculum Position to the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction. And so one of the things I'd be, if I were you, I'd be saying, well, what does that mean in terms of central office? I've got a strong team. We're adults. We know how to, we know how to work with one another. And if you believe in a team, then when you rely upon the team to make the best decisions and move the district forward, this is not about a pecking order. If something, if I'm out, you have someone who is the interim superintendent. It would make sense for me to say, Deidre, let's go to your strengths. If we have another, something else comes up, then we would go to Karen's strengths in the area of special education. We'd go to Angela's strength. This is what teams know. We go, we work towards our strengths. So I'm not, I'm not asking, this is not a new position. I'm asking you to change the title. I'm not asking you to give stipends and take the responsibilities and give you them out. Nope. It's her responsibility to be the leading curriculum instructor, and whatever comes our way from DESE, that's her responsibility. What comes our way from MSBA, it's his responsibility. And I'm supposed to make sure that everything happens in the district. So I have ultimate responsibility. Okay? Either any one of these people leave, it's a huge hole in the district. And so one of the things that Steve Cole talked to me about during our times when you were evaluating me is recognizing the people within our system. I am doing that. I am very mindful of our budget. If you have to go into executive session, work on a new contract, okay? We will use money from Race to the Top to do that. We can do that. They allow us to. They say you can do it, especially in the area of implementing the new Common Core. So I'm recommending that the school committee approve the change of the title of the Director of Curriculum Position to the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction.
Second.
As we begin this discussion, one of the things I had asked Mark to do was to sort of get a legal opinion on this, and he was able to get that. And based on the recommendation of the superintendent, the school committee can create that job title, create that position, make that happen. The law does not require that be a posted job. The law is very specific about that. So the conversation going forward here is whether or not we support the change in the title, and then it's up to the superintendent to decide where it goes from there. And of course, in the same way that we have, we have, we hear from the superintendent recommendations about salary raises for these assistant superintendents, it would be the same for our assistant superintendent. That having been said, I'll open it up to the floor. Any comments or thoughts that you'd like to share?
Thank you. I think that as superintendent, it's important that in any leadership position that you are able to form the team that you need to work with. I think that we've seen over the past year, we've seen this as a strength that Dr. Kerbel has. He's been able to make the kinds of changes across the district that he felt were necessary to focus on student achievement and move our schools to be greater than they currently are. I have been incredibly impressed with Angela Bick's work. I think that she has grown tremendously in the many years that I have seen her come and present at school committee meetings, been at various other situations with her, whether it be Gomi or EBC. I think that this is a wonderful and deserving change for her, and I fully support this. And I'm really, really pleased. I've turned about this enormous list of things you are required to do, but if anyone can get these done, I'm sure we can.
I echo everything that Karen has said. I believe there are three things that I want to mention. One, the qualifications in terms of what Angela brings to the plate, and to couple that with experience, I think it's a natural title change. But the service to the district also, like hiring from within in terms of this is a wonderful thing. And I've worked with Angela over the last six years on the, what used to be Newburyport Business Coalition. And I always took for granted that everybody knew what she was doing. And I guess until you see it listed out, it's easy to see how you could miss some of the very important work that she does that absolutely impacts student achievement and helps move our district forward. So I really support this wholeheartedly and appreciate you asking this.
Other comments or feedback?
I think there's probably the word that comes to mind when I think of Angela is partner. She is someone who truly has found a way of engaging people from outside the schools and allowing their engagement to have impact on students, on students within the schools. Whether it's reaching out to granting organizations, that I'd say more than requesting information from or requesting comes from, she partners with them. She gets them involved and truly makes, has their impact. I'll just go through them. It could be the Education Business Coalition. I've served on the board there for eight years and been thrilled with Angela being a regular part of that organization. And she's been there 20-some-hundred years, do you see? And she's been there twenty-some-hundred years, do you see? So she's been working with the EBC since its inception, and that is one of the truly unique programs that separates Newburyport from any other community in Massachusetts. Nobody else has a candid partner program like the Education Business Coalition. Angela was there at its inception. Angela continues to push for bigger and better things. The partnership is evident also in the work that she's done in professional development with Leslie University. The added value that she gets out of our consultants, not just the time that they put in, but she manages to squeeze every last drop of value out of those consultants. And we have some of them who we're not even. So when I, when I, when I think of that, I think that's just a very, very natural move. And I'm thrilled that we can promote from within. It's always been a concern that I've had, being a 21st century education junkie that I am, that we didn't have the public image for curriculum instruction that I thought we needed for it. And that comes with the title of an assistant superintendent. I think that's an important aspect as well. So I do applaud the superintendent for this recommendation. Are there concerns? Sure, there are concerns that I had. But overall, I think it's the best thing we can possibly do for our district. And I know that Angela will step up to, she's already stepped into it. What are we talking about? She's already there. We just need to recognize it.
Dan. I would simply echo what the mayor, Stephanie and Nick have already said, and just try to be brief and simply state that in the meetings in which both Deirdre and Angela present to me personally, those are the meetings that I walk away with a real firm grasp of where we stand as a district. It's not always great news, but you know, they do together work, I think, very well for this district. And I think I am lucky as a school committee member to have Angela, Deirdre, and Dr. Kerbel creating such a great team. I read the news, read the newspapers, other communities, school committees don't have it so good. We are pretty fortunate to have the team we have. That's my two cents.
I'm also going to say that I've had the privilege of working with Angela as, and with Nick, but with Angela as an administrative liaison this year. And I enjoyed those meetings. I found her tremendously knowledgeable. She has things at the tips of her fingers that I don't know how they get there or stay there or are able to come out the way they do. But, and I'm not going to take a lot of the committee's time. I agree with what everyone said, and I have, I did say to Mark that the most important thing to me was that he built the team that he felt would lead us forward. And I think this is it. Thank you.
Thank you. I have some concerns about this. I know I've shared them. I've talked with Dr. Kerbel. I've talked with Bruce. I see this as, you know, when it was originally introduced as simply a change to the title, I really see this as creating a new position. And I guess I'm not really enthused about the process we're going through. And I don't want to take anything away from the responsibilities and efforts that are outlined in the pages that are included here, because I sincerely appreciate that effort to get it all done. But I also have to say as someone who's been on this committee for a number of years, someone who has prudently looked at budgets, looked at capabilities, capacities, I have to ask myself a question that I think relates to education. It's called the ABCs. Is this position as written achievable, believable, conceivable? While I think it's intrepid that we're just going to move forward successfully and efficiently, I also, my prudent, my common sense tells me that overloaded position has less, is less likely for an overloaded position to do that. There's more likelihood that it's going to get bogged down with something. So while I understand the needs, I understand the need to work on having more, that strong team, I also think it's prudent as a school committee that we better understand what the outline of this job is, what the costs are, what we're going to do to make more reasonable the job load. The same could be said for Ms. Farrell's job. Any cost related to paying others to do that job, because we can agree about this change being a great thing now, but later on, as things unfold and such changes occur, it's going to be, we really have to take a look at what we've decided upon. For instance, it's mentioned that with the new regulations for evaluated teaching, teachers, that a number of those responsibilities are going to fall under this new position. That's a lot of time. That's a lot of responsibilities. And getting involved in evaluation, so is there going to be more responsibility? Is there going to be more hours to the day? I too, having lived here, having been a taxpayer my whole life pretty much, having gone to school here, I too appreciate a school district that wants to move forward. But I also know that everybody has a load limit. And related to that, there's a piece of that load limit that trickles down. I think that any administrators in this room know that teachers in our schools have a certain load of students. And if you push that load up too high, not only does it get very stressful for student, for the teachers, it's pretty stressful for the students. And I guess I see some of that, having again, lived in this area, having been on a committee for a number of years, I've paid attention to those load numbers. I've seen it trickle down. I've seen excessive demands on kids in the last year, for instance, at the high school with homework. I didn't see a real united response on that. Perhaps with this position, that will get better. I'm hoping it gets better from the tone people are saying here, it's getting better. But I simply don't think it's prudent to perpetuate an overloaded position. So I guess I don't support this change right now. What I would support is having a little more time to look at and discuss how we can maybe spread some of these things out, because I think that's the most reasonable thing to do. To expect somebody to just pile things on the people, that's eventually going to trickle down. And it's going to trickle down to, to the people that deliver the services, the agents of education, our teaching staff. And without proper enrichment, without proper study time, I think it's going to trickle down to our kids. So, you know, I just, the process of this, I'm not, I can't hang my hat on it. And I wish we just had, I, you know, I'm not going to support changing the name tonight. I would support us being able to take a little more time to look at how some of these things can get spread out, because I just don't see this being realistic to just perpetuate the same situation with a name change. Thank you.
I have a few comments that I'd like to make. With all due respect, I don't agree that we're creating a new position here. I agree that the list is impressive, but it is a list of what she is already doing. It is what we are expecting of her right now and what she has been doing, I think, fairly successfully for an extended period of time. I've also been here a long time. I actually create everybody in this room, including Deirdre, in my time spent on the school committee. And one of the things a wise school committee member consistently has hammered home to me is the importance of valuing the people we have, of retaining people, of setting people up to succeed. I also believe, like Cheryl does, that the superintendent should pick the team that the superintendent feels the superintendent should have and is in the best interest of the system. And with regard to Steve's concerns, which I think are legitimate concerns of overwork, of piling too many things on, I remember something, it was a privilege for Cheryl and I to be part of the hiring process for Dr. Kerbel. And Steve was one of the people who went on the site visits. And I had reported back to me from two people on that site visit, very interesting, a teacher that was spoken to and his boss. And they both said exactly the same thing. There is something about this guy that makes me want to work harder, smarter, and better. I don't know what it is, but I want that to happen. And I have seen that in my time here. I have seen people flourish. And I, because I don't believe this is a new position, because I do believe that we have an opportunity here to bring to a position, to a level of respect, somebody who's doing that job. We've been calling it director of curriculum, but in fact, it is completely an assistant superintendent position. I support that. I have confidence in Mark. I have had personal experience working with Angela and have seen her take on issues and make things happen. The ability to put the early literacy effort into the Brezner hand this year in such a short period of time to show the results that it showed demonstrated quite a bit to me. And at some point, at some point, you move forward with faith and trust in the people that you got. And I, I am strongly in favor of that. If anybody has any additional comments, it's an opportunity to make them. Going now, I'm going to call the question. Would you prefer a roll call vote on this?
Because there's been a motion.
Yeah, the motion has been made, et cetera.
Do you want a roll call?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
No.
Ms. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Menon?
Yes.
Mayor Holliday?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. DeCanta?
Yes.
Mr. Keown?
Yes.
Dr. Kerbel, having, the school committee had voted to establish this position, I would ask you to go into contract negotiations and report back to us at executive session and put your recommendations on.
Thank you, and thanks to all of you, and I ask for further assistance.
Before. We're going to reconvene here. And the superintendent tells me we're going to combine nine and ten in one wonderful, delightful formative package, which lay it on us.
I'd like to ask Karen Rann and Dr. Craig to come up to the table. We want to update the school committee on the special education component of the strategic plan and the, ask Dr. Craig to give us a special education inclusion initiative update. We want to talk a little bit about Karen. Karen's also, she's a board member of our administrative team, and I thoroughly enjoy working with Karen. She's, I had a chance to be the special education director for a year, and so glad to give that up. It's a very difficult job. Very difficult, very, I think it's.
See the gray hair? Now you know why.
I think it's a, I think it's a challenging position. And I think that she has the scholarship, the personal skills, the understanding of the law, you know, to help guide the district in this area of special education. Special education is very difficult because the answers are so great. It's always great, it's never black and white. And we ask our teachers to work exceptionally hard on behalf of students. And teachers have, they want to do really, really well. And well, I applaud Karen, you know, to provide the answers to lead the district. You know, I've got a chance to know Dr. Craig over the last year, and both these people are very, very respected. And Dr. Craig is, you know, to the point where our principals will say, when I ask him some tough questions sometimes, I have to speak to Dr. Craig. And that says a lot for the kind of expertise that Dr. Craig brings to the table for our district and works exceptionally well with our teachers. So Karen, it's all yours.
Great, thank you. First, I'd like to correct Dr. Kerbel just a little bit. I don't like to call this the special ed component of the strategic plan, because Angela and I really worked hard to integrate this goal as both of our goal. We didn't want this initiative to be seen as a special ed initiative. We really wanted to see this initiative as providing equal access to all of our students on both ends of the spectrum, from the struggling learners all the way to the gifted learners. So when I look at this goal from the strategic plan, equal access to a common and differentiated learning environment, I don't consider it the special ed goal. Angela and I work really closely in tandem on reaching the benchmarks of this goal, but I've spearheaded the inclusion initiative to make this goal move forward. So that's why I'm reporting out to you tonight. So what I did in my update is I restated the goal for you. I don't have to read it to you, I'm sure you know it as well as I do. And the vision statement that we wrote in the strategic plan to serve as the guiding principle for this goal. Our opportunities for improvement were that our current pullout practices did not meet the requirements of the law. We recited on that six years ago in our comprehensive program review, which led to us finding AGH associates and Dr. Craig and partnering with her for five, going into our fifth year now, to improve our practices around this goal. So I gave you a few highlights of what's been accomplished to date, and I hope you've had an opportunity to read that. We've really provided extensive professional development. We have met the goal that 100% of our special education teachers, related service providers, counselors, and therapists have all participated in formal training with Dr. Craig around an integrated therapy model, where we're bringing services to general ed classrooms and serving kids in a least restrictive environment. And we've made a lot of progress with that. We've block scheduled special education and service, related service providers into our general ed classrooms. In doing that, I think that we're catching more students who might have been identified as at risk, but now we have speech and language and OT and even special educators going into classrooms and working with kids through an RTI model, really a response to intervention, where we're providing some short-term interventions to students who might otherwise not yet be identified. And then when they're responding, they're no longer needing to be referred to special education. We've tracked and reduced pullout services. We've changed our leadership model from special education coordinators to team facilitation leaders, where they've relinquished the ownership of special education to our school principals. Our principals are really taking the ownership of the special education program, problem solving the day-to-day needs of the students in their building. And the team facilitation leaders are simply leading the process, facilitating our team meetings, and helping to build the consensus around the decisions that are made at the table. We've developed inclusionary look fours, so that when the administrative team is visiting classrooms, we know what best practices we're looking for. We've identified what six types of co-teaching looks like, so when we walk into a room and we see two educators, we can take a look at what model they're practicing and we can identify it quickly. We've strengthened transition procedures for students with disabilities. Dr. Craig has introduced us to a very powerful process called MAPS. It's the McGill Action Planning System, where you take our It's the McGill Action Planning System, where you take our most significant students and you hold a transition meeting with the sending team, the receiving team. We talk about the student in detail, we invite the family, we invite the student, and we ask, what are your hopes for your child? What are your dreams? What are your nightmares? What does the student need to be successful? And we've been commended from community members who have heard that we're doing this on how successful it's been. I'd love to invite you to participate in one because they're just so powerful. They're a tear shed, there are parents who leave there feeling, my child is going to be taken care of at the next building or the next grade level. It's really been powerful to watch. We have completed a full analysis of our referral rates, and I shared that with you at your retreat. I shared with you the referral trends for the past three years. We have some work to do there. I'm disappointed in the percentages of students referred for special ed and then the students who are found eligible for services. And I think that's something that we recognize and we're working to strengthen. And we've already scheduled some training, formal training for our team facilitation leaders and our RTI teams so that we can reduce that correlation and hopefully make it better. But that was helpful and telling, as I'm sure you all saw when you looked at the data at the retreat. We developed a special ed ad hoc this year, and we examined our ABA programs, the success of inclusion at our schools, transitions from school to school, and the committee has made recommendations to me, and I'm in the process of just writing those up, and I hope to share them with you at a future meeting this fall, so that we can map a plan of where special education's going to be going. It's also time for our next comprehensive program review. We just completed the self-assessment, which was a tedious process to upload document after document after document to them. They have all of our data, they're reviewing it, and I was just notified last week that they will be coming to do an orientation with us the last week of September, and the DESE will be on-site the last week of November for our visit. So it'll be interesting to see where we're at now compared to six years ago before we started this. So while I'm anxious about the visit, I'm almost excited too at the same time. So where do we go from there? I listed out some of what we've identified as actions for FY 11 and 12. It's to increase that technical assistance to our related service providers and continuing that push for a more integrated model of service delivery, to provide future training to new teachers and service providers. We have a cyclical spiral effect, if you will, for all new staff that are coming on board. Dr. Craig will rerun her integrated therapy class, and they'll all be required to take it, so that they get brought up to speed with the rest of the training the district's already received. Examining the effectiveness of our RTI at all levels, you know, we had the full analysis in 210 to 11, but now we want to try and reduce that correlation and make that stronger. We hope to provide more, like I said earlier, increased training and technical assistance in a tiered model of intervention to strengthen our RTI process, provide some technical training and assistance to teachers around progress monitoring. That was really a piece of where RTI was falling short, was that progress monitoring and showing teachers how to collect data on the interventions that they're recommending and to keep track of that data to make informed decisions for students. Examining the culture of the schools to determine if special education teachers and students feel accepted by regular ed teachers. One thing Dr. Craig always says is it's really evident in a shared partnership, these are our students, not yours, not mine, but ours. And are we getting to that level in this process that regular ed teachers have truly accepted the special education teachers into their classrooms and are valuing the skills that they're bringing to the classroom, the special ed teachers and the therapists? So we hope to look at that this year. To provide supports to teachers and the use of assistive technology that helps students to read and write, we are on the cutting edge right now. The iPad is revolutionizing special education in schools, and I was fortunate to attend a workshop for special ed administrators on the use of the iPad and its applications to the classroom. And I'm researching grant opportunities to try and bring iPads to our district. We have two students who have purchased them independently and are using them and are having great success with them. It's really incredible to see them using it. So I hope to expand that for more students in our district. And to provide training and technical assistance to special ed and related service providers in writing those integrated IEPs. You know, if the IEP isn't an integrated IEP, then everything that we're doing and promoting just isn't going to go very far. So it's a, it's a big list, and we're hopeful that we'll get there. I also provided to you Dr. Craig's summary this summer of our five-year plan. You're probably familiar with this, she's presented it before, but each year, the bulleted items are what we had hoped to achieve with the principals. If you remember when I met with the administrative council and we outlined what they initially would look like, and then the chart that follows each year are the specific activities that we've conceded. So...
What's in the page numbers there?
That's okay. There are no page numbers, but year four is page five. And you can see all of the actions that we corrected this year and that Dr. Craig is recommending that we consider for the year moving forward. So I'm not going to read that at length to you, but if you have any questions or comments for Dr. Craig around, we'd be happy to answer what we can.
Dr. Craig, I remember when you first came, and I think the comment that you made that resonated most with me is that inclusion and moving a district forward in this manner, it's not something that happens overnight. It does require constant cheerleading. I think that was the phrase you used. And I'm just curious, your assessment in general of how you've seen things progress? How have you liked or disliked? Is it, are you feeling that it's starting to click? Are you...
Absolutely feel like it's more than started to click. And one of the things that Karen and Angela and I really committed to in the beginning of this was that we would be doing the literacy initiative, because the math initiative, I don't think it started quite at that point, in lockstep with inclusion. And I feel like I've tried to remain really on that track, and I have to commend you on all the staff in the very court, but the regular classroom teachers have moved to the plate and are just, I've taught, in addition to the integrated therapy class, I've taught a three-credit course, a graduate course, mostly teachers have taken it. And it's just been an incredibly uplifting experience for me to hear these people. I've made them do reflective journals because that's what the Quad's and Cornell do, so that's what they're doing with the kids. And it's just been a wonderful experience to see adult professionals come to a realization of what they've got to contribute to kids with disabilities. And once they figure that out, the rest of it is just, it's very easy after that. They, I really feel teachers need to know that what they're doing for a child is worth something in the child's life. And once they know that, then they can move forward. So I think, yes, we are moving forward. What I think is the strongest need of the district right now is we need to have documentation and so historically, we're in a really good place because I think Angela's initiatives are also in a place where we're beginning to look at student work and do progress monitoring and regular ed curriculum initiatives. And I'm kind of trying to lockstep what I am showing people how to do in terms of IEPs so that it's the same process. We're looking at student work, evaluating student work, and assessing it against the criteria of where we want the kids to be on the IEPs. So I think that we can get that one nailed down and get the RTI really focused on universal screenings for classrooms and schools, and looking at the core curriculum as the first step in intervention. I think you're in very good shape, quite frankly. And there are a lot of children in the very court who are fully accepted into your schools who wouldn't have been 10 years ago and probably are still not in other communities in the state. So you should be commended for that. And I'm saying that very sincerely. Some of the work that I've seen with very involved kids is really, it touches my heart after all these years, quite frankly. Kids feel like they're part of their school communities, I think. And I think the parents feel that way, too. That's what they tell me, so maybe they're just being nice to me, but that's what they tell me. So, yes, so they...
Thank you.
But cheerleading has been needed. And what I've been trying to do is encourage the principals to take that on as their role in relationship to their staff, that they need to become the cheerleader for all the children in their school, including the kids on IEPs. And they have stepped to the plate. The principals have done a masterful job of buying into the model, and they're very busy people, and they're always willing to meet, plan, to come to the trainings and support their staff. So I can't say enough about the principals. Kind of things about the principals.
I don't have a question as much as a comment. I loved your opening where you talked about that your, the equal access to all learners and that I'm hearing, I hope, that this isn't just a special education initiative. It's initiative for all students to be in the best learning environment they can be in at any given time. And being an educator myself, I've seen the magic that happens with inclusion to everybody involved, the families, the classroom teachers, the service providers. So it's a direction that I'm glad we're, we're taking, and I want to continue that. I have a question about, when you did this write-up and you mentioned teachers, were you only talking about special education teachers?
In which piece, Cheryl?
Well, most of them, or, you know, for instance, I noticed one of your goals, increased co-teaching between regular and sped teachers. So how does the classroom teacher, how are they brought along in that whole process? Because one of the most important statements you made is there, all of the kids are our kids.
Right. We really, like I said, Angela and I really focused on promoting this as a differentiated instruction goal and not a special education goal. Because when you differentiate the instruction, you're providing the best instruction for the weakest learners, as well as challenging those who have the gifts and talents to be challenged. And one of the things that we've committed to is that in every professional development course we've drawn, and we've run several, we have not closed it and just had special education teachers participate. We've put a focused effort on combining the population of teachers that attend. So the first integrated therapies classes that we ran, we gave each school five slots for general ed teachers, five slots for special ed teachers, five slots for related service providers, and five slots for anybody else, PE music. I took Dr. Craig's three-credit course myself, and in my cohort alone, we had the health and nutrition teacher from the high school, our teacher, a guidance counselor. So the message is really, we're getting interest from all departments, not just special education. And we've, we've committed that in held slots for people to sign up and participate. We're encouraging them to sign up as co-teaching teams because that strengthens that co-teaching relationship, but we're not prohibiting or closing the door to anybody who's interested. And we've had quite a diverse turnout.
A lot of different types of people sign up. And one of the things that I've tried to do, especially, I do it in integrated therapies classes, but particularly in the three-credit graduate course, is I've tried to link, like what the mapping means in relationship to special ed kids and differentiated instruction and what the literacy stuff means in terms of children that have a hard time learning how to read. So, and I've gotten the feedback from the teachers that the classes help them integrate the initiatives that the district is doing, that they leave the class seeing it not as three different initiatives, but as one and the same, kind of really creating differentiated instruction for all children. And so today, when I started my day in the very court at the eight o'clock training of new staff, Angela...
Thank you.
Eight o'clock. One of the things that I really wanted to share with you and the rest of the people here is that, one of the feedback things that I got at the end was, if you have enough differentiated instruction that's really good, you don't need very many accommodations for all children. And I thought, that's another bit right there. And that was from people you hired for this new school year, so I felt really good about that.
See, and I think that's part of the background of the response to intervention.
Yes.
And it's not just for children that are on an IEP, it's for any at-risk learner. And so I think the more we can talk about melding those two together, the more they will be all of our kids.
Right. But that speaks volumes, too, to where we've come from and where we were, because just the statement that you just made hits me, that we've trained our administrators so well that in our search for new staff, these are the qualities that we're looking for in teachers, and we're hiring the very best of the best. And that they came to new staff orientation with that message speaks volumes to me, that we're making progress. So that's great to hear.
The RTI team, like what I've recommended to the building principals is when they're selecting recruiting members for that team, is that they look to the master teachers in their building, and that that's who should be the core of the RTI, because the meetings need to be taken up talking about teaching, not about diagnoses, not about problems with kids, but really in terms of how are we going to teach this differently so that children can get it and be successful. So I'm encouraged by the people that they've recommended in the buildings, and I think that's going to be a good year for them.
That's great.
And how long are you with us?
I'm, I'm here for the year, as far as I know. God willing. I've enjoyed my time here. I really have enjoyed working with the staff.
As I put in your package, this is our fifth year of what we hoped to call a five-year inclusion initiative, and one of the things Susan and I will be tasked with this year is really how to resonate that in our district. So how do we sustain the initiative and build capacity within our district to wean some of it away from Susan so that we are on our own? So that's still to be determined, and that's going to be a goal this year.
I can't believe it's been...
That's the part I'm astounded at. We're bleak.
We've been working hard.
Progress has been made.
I've spent a lot of time discovering this aspect.
I know.
Yeah, I, I would offer you this comment, which is an interesting perspective that I'm not sure that you're quite capturing, but I have been privileged to be sitting here for 10 years, which coincides with the exact amount of time that my children have been in public school system. And to see this inclusion initiative through their eyes, as they move through the system, and how it was 10 years ago and how it is now is quite extraordinary. And I am thrilled and delighted, really, to quote Brooks, at what we've been able to accomplish and the approach that we're taking. There's still work to do, but seeing it through my kids' eyes, how their attitudes have changed about who's in their class, and it's just been really, really, and I don't know that you're capturing, there's a way for you to even capture that information, but there already is anecdotal.
Right. And I think that that's been an interesting thing to even observe, like jumping a generation. The parents who are knowing children at the Brown School, like for the last two years we've noticed, they're of an age that they had inclusionary experiences themselves as children, and they come in expecting that their child will be included, as opposed to people that are a little older that come in hoping that he'll take my child, but not really looking for placement in a regular classroom, which appears. And I think that's yet another anecdotal example, but it does change people's lives, not just the kids with disabilities, but also their peers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The dollars are mighty tempting.
I'm going to turn the next item over to Assistant Speaker, Carol. An MSBA update, at which point I think one of the, one of the items that we need to do are, we need to do another motion that is per the MSBA. We will dedicate our entire next meeting to motions from the MSBA that we didn't do. Just take care of them all at once.
First of all, why don't I update you on the NOCH/MOLIN OPM, Owners Project Manager, request for services interviews that were held last Thursday evening. Brezner hand, I reported to you, that's underway and that is decided as far as the ranking of the Owners Project Manager, which was hearing number one after the interviews. The following day, we had eight submissions of our requests for services for Owners Project Managers. However, we could only consider seven because one was after the 12 o'clock deadline. I did not open it, I stamped it as far as the time it was received, and it could not be considered because of that. So we ranked, the selection committee ranked seven. What you have in front of you is that tabulation that you saw as well for Brezner hand, but this is the tabulation for the NOCH/MOLIN renovations and additions, Owners Project Manager Request for Services respondents. At the meeting of the selection committee after the tabulation was done, it was decided to interview three, as opposed to four from Brezner hand. So we called RF Walsh, Hiri, and Dataless to interview last Thursday night. Last Thursday afternoon, Dataless withdrew. We are required to interview three. So once Dataless withdrew, I called MSVA and said, you're requiring us to do three, one has just withdrew. What does that mean to our process? And they said, since it was out of our control, it was their decision that we met the requirements of MSVA. So we continued. So we continued with the interviews Thursday evening, interviewing at six, HIRI, and interviewing at seven o'clock, RF Walsh. And after the interviews were concluded, the selection committee ranked HIRI number one and RF Walsh number two. Additionally, the selection committee voted to have the assistant superintendent start negotiations with HIRI on both projects. So that next morning, I called the regional rep from HIRI, and I asked him to submit to us a fee proposal today. I also called all of the other interviewees, as well as emailed other respondents, thank you very much, and here were the results. HIRI and I are working back and forth, understanding their fee proposal, as well as submitting it to MSBA for their review as well. This morning, I got a phone call from MSBA. MSBA, as you know, has a meeting September 12th that we're trying to make, and we're trying to get on the agenda, and we're trying to get both projects approved. And we have that date chiseled in cement. One of the requirements MSBA has at this juncture is the submittal of a packet of information regarding the entire process for both projects. I was told today that if we do not have those submittals to MSBA, by Friday, we will not make the September 12th deadline. So Steve and I debriefed this morning, we got some flip charts, chunked it out, what do we need to do, what do we need to have happen, how can we possibly pull this off and have a good sense about what we need to achieve? There are such things as your legal counsel, and Mayor Holliday has given me her contact, must certify that the City of Newburyport is in fact a city of Newburyport operating as a city in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. She needs to see all the votes that have been taken to date, review the RFS, review the template contract, et cetera, et cetera. So I got her on the phone first, and I'm submitting documents to her tomorrow. Poor Mark came into my office at one point and said, "Hey, how you doing? Good morning, nice to see you today." And I said, with deer-in-the-headlight kind of eyes, with Steve across, "Mark, I've just gotten a phone call from MSBA." And he was gracious enough to, you know, the first thing out of his mouth is like, "Oh my God, Wednesday and Thursday, you're out of the office." So we talked a little bit about being out of the office Wednesday and Thursday at our leadership meeting with the rest of the staff and things like that. Certainly, I don't want to miss the 12th deadline. In fact, I called the mayor to give her a heads up that I would be reporting out, and the text I got back was in all capital letters.
You will, please?
You will not miss. So, my walking orders are, over the next few days, just trying to put this significant packet together. It's process-oriented, it's a lot of documentation, they're asking for every sort of milestone and task associated with both projects. So the same packet we put for one, we're going to have to recreate for the other. So Steve and I are moving those packets forward. In addition to that, HIRI and I are starting to do those contract negotiations, and once HIRI submits fee for proposal, I'm sending it out to the selection committee, looking for feedback and trying to move that forward as soon as possible, efficiently with doing our due diligence as well. We have a meeting on Thursday night, the selection committee, to review where we are in regards to that contract negotiations with HIRI.
Deadline for that?
I've got to have that in the packet for Friday. However, after I got off the phone with MSBA today, I got an email maybe 15 or 20 minutes later that I forwarded to the superintendent, that, you know, started out very strictly, and you will, and as we discussed, however, if you get the packet of information and you're still negotiating contract, give us this, because this really is template. It's their contract, all it changes is scope and how much. But it's their contract, and they're not allowing you to change any verbiage in regards to anything in regards to contract language is concerned. In fact, Lisa Mead has reviewed it, had made four or five changes, sent those up to the general counsel. The general counsel said, "Is it that?" No. So thank you, Lisa, for that effort.
Nothing ventured, nothing averted.
It's moving along, it's moving along as expeditiously as this whole process has been since, I think, mid-May. And so Steve and I are committed to ensuring that Friday, even if we have to drive the packets into Boston, we'll drive the packets into Boston, going 93 and 120.
Those were not speeds, those were the routes.
So I think Dan, when I begin...
Right. Oh.
There are two votes that need to be taken. MSBA's part of the packet is requiring that the school committee approve the appointment of the mayor's selected members to the selection committee from the city's building committee. So I typed up two motions.
Two motions, one for Bresnahan, one for...
Right.
So.
It's basically these people.
I move to approve the mayor's appointments of members from the City of Newburyport Building Committee to the owner's project manager selection committee for the Bresnahan Model Elementary School. Those members are Steve Burgholm, Deidre Farrell, Scott Hall, Sarah Holden, Tom Jones, Dan Keown, Lisa Mead, and John O'Connell. Second.
Second.
Second, Miss Weaver, thank you very much. Couldn't possibly have any discussion on this. Hearing none. I guess, did I want to walk along or pre-disc?
I would just vote with the structure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions?
Second motion is to approve the mayor's appointments of the members from the City of Newburyport Building Committee to the owner's project manager selection committee for the NOC-MOON renovations and additions project, and they are the same members. Second.
Any discussion, hearing none.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We will say the school committee official thank you to these people for the next meeting so that we don't run into thanking them at the same time we're reporting them. So, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Deidre, at the risk of just letting my colleagues know that I did do my homework, all the zeros next to my name, I'm not really sure why, but I did rank them.
Yes, you did. Actually, Scott's two, so I must have copied a preliminary one towards the end of the day.
Thank you, I was going to ask.
Yes. As respondents, as the selection committee members were emailing me and were dropping things off, we were entering into the tabulation form, so that when people came to the meeting, I could enter those that, you know, two rather than six. So this is a pre-meeting-to-date form, I can certainly email you the total form. Interestingly enough, though, if you look at it with one, two, three, four, five members, it's HIRI, Walsh, Daedalus. With the other three members added, it was HIRI, Walsh, and Daedalus. So the integrity of the process was, you know, even from a statistical standpoint, true to the tabulation.
If you would send that on, I am interested in seeing how our representative...
Please, sir. It's all about the education.
We're at our second period of public comment.
Dominique, dear, I feel like applauding. And, you know, I joined in the applause earlier for Angela Beck, who has now left the assistant superintendent of curriculum and education. And, you know, just, I just wanted to make a comment, I know that it's a long meeting, but just about the superintendent and his team. Because we talked during the unrecorded public comment about the baseball team, how essential that is and that whole dynamic. And I had the pleasure, of course, we always observe, Deidre, and, you know, at the meetings and her opportunity to really display her talents and organizational skills, and amazing, you know, capacity to just sort of bring all of this, these things together in whatever project she's involved in. But I did, before the superintendent came on board last summer, have an opportunity to sit in a meeting that, unfortunately with the other individual, it didn't go as that person wanted to, but I thought the right decision was reached by the superintendent elect. But the dynamic between Angela and the superintendent then, and that whole synergy, I mean, it's all about synergy and the parts being, you know, grander and greater than the whole, than the individual parts. And it just really, you know, I, as I said, I was applauding here, then with Angela and I applaud now, I think the superintendent has a great team. And as Angela pointed out, and she said she had wished that she could talk, she, too, has a team that's working together. So that whole, you know, all of the people, people out in the community don't understand, you know, what it takes to sort of like educate our younger generation. And I know that sometimes, just being able, those times to showcase that. And so if those people who do tune in, and many do, you know, instances like that, this, not only what it's taking here, but just, you know, the matter of innovation and motivation that this new title, you know, over the role that Angela already has, just to get, you know, the students and the faculty with our superintendent, whose role is really, has always been his forte to relationships. So, you know, thank you, I'm glad to be here to audit in person, and I'm hoping many are at home watching and applauding, too.
Any additional public comments? I turn over the superintendent and the assistant superintendent, I know that if you could put this down in five minutes, I'd like to box ten.
Good, all right. I want to recognize central office staff, custodians, secretaries, administrators, getting ready for the opening day, it's a frenzy. Actually, my wife and I were in the office trying to pick up something over the weekend, and she walked in, she says, "Superintendent has a messy desk." So, everybody's really busy, I appreciate it. And I know that you two would say the custodians do a great job, and everything looks so terrific. It sounds great, and it takes a lot of work to get ready, and they really are unsung heroes, so I applaud them. I had an opportunity with Mike Parrott, Angela and I met with Northern Essex Community College and had a discussion about the dual enrollment program. And I think they have a pretty good program, however, we have a schedule that rotates. So, I think that Mike is, it's something for us to think about and work towards. I'll give you more information about that later on. We have a leadership orientation for new leaders on August 18th, actually 13 people. And I'm very upbeat about the new people who are in leadership positions. 24th and 25th, so this week, Thursday, Wednesday and Thursday, we have a leadership retreat for everybody in the district, we have about 37 people. I want to mention that, you need to help me if I get this right, Abraham's Bagels will sponsor breakfast Wednesday.
That's mine.
Wednesday.
Thank you, Linda.
And Oregano's going to sponsor a lot.
Thank you, God.
Wednesday and Thursday. It's all great, because you just say the words, and before you can even squint, you say yes, and I really appreciate the support. You're invited to opening day for staff on August 31st, high school auditorium, breakfast is 7:30. We're going to have coffee cake sponsored by Alder Merrill, okay, and we got a gift certificate from Stock and Shop, we'll help cover that, thanks to both of them. We put that September 31st is the full professional development date for staff.
September 31st?
September 1st.
I don't think we voted that on the count.
No, September 1st is the full professional day for staff. Parents, send your kids to school after Labor Day, as a reminder. I want to thank Nick, the Kenter, for, you know, helping us with our staff lunching and networking fear that we have on that day. That's a big event, so if any businesses are interested in participating in the networking fair, they can call my office, or they can call Nick. And there's a lot of other people to thank as we get, and I'll thank them after September 1st. We've hired some terrific people, some great teachers. I had a lovely hire, a great new music teacher from the NOC Middle School, and part of her interview with me, she had to give a choral warm-up. Kathy sings pretty well, I know, and it was good, it was fine, she was great, she was doing a great job for us. We have, I'm going to create a couple of ad hoc committees early September. I want to, any one or two meetings for naming of the baseball field committee. You know, I need some real help from Steve in terms of how to appropriately name this committee. And from Bruce, since these two have been involved from the get-go. A multiple-year calendar committee, that'll be about two or three meetings. The curb appeal project committee, that'll be two meetings in the fall, and then probably meetings over time. And Bruce, do you want to have a little bit of a super evaluation?
Yeah, yes, briefly. I have been poring over our self-evaluations for the last four or five years, and they're interesting reading. But, so I'm extracting some relevant questions and have sketched out at least the major areas that I think we should be talking about. My hope is to have a relatively simple self-evaluation that will set us up with very clear goals for next year. And I'm looking at a budget question, an operating norms question, and whether or not our rooms have become more efficient. I'm looking at a public outreach question, I'm looking at a question about our decision-making process and the relative transparency of it. I'm looking at the superintendent's entry plan, and our response and support of it, and how it was distributed, superintendent evaluation, whether or not we've been able to nail down the MOU on the high school schedule, which is obviously something that we've done. The use of the ad hoc committees, new building, and as part of the new building, sort of a long-term vision question about our use of buildings. I have a question that I'm trying to formulate about the finance committee and how it's going to interface citywide, and our ongoing policy work and set goals for the superintendent, that's the list of questions that I've extracted at this point, they're not formulated, I'm hoping to formulate them, and then I will circulate them to further receive back if there's stuff that's missing, feel free to let me know if I've missed an area that we should be looking at. Once I circulate it, we'll be open for more.
Thanks, Bruce, that's, I'm finished with my assistant.
In your packet, there are two things that I'll be reporting on, school choice. There are two spreadsheets in your packet regarding school choice. For the FY 11, 12 school year, we will have 31 new choice students enrolled in the district. On the second spreadsheet attached in your packet, there was a request for some comparisons on school choice, what seats we declared open, the number of seats we declare open, how many apply, and then how many actual come in, register, and show up after being accepted. So that there's that comparison from a multi-year perspective for you in your packet. In regards to school readiness, I just have four areas I'll hit on quickly for you. Don Scan and the technology staff have done just an exceptional job. I asked Don for just a couple of bullets as to, you know, what he's achieved, what his department has achieved. I'll read a few of them. Replaced all computers in room 245 at the lab at the high school. Moved old 245 computers to graphic arts. Moved old graphic arts computers to music lab. Removed non-porly-working computers and swapping them with the compacts remaining from the teachers' upgrades earlier this year. Recycled old computers. Recycled old computers. Imaged over 12 hard disks. Computers. Moved 40 old compacts from the high school to Brown to replace the Brown older computers. Replaced the Brezneran lab. Reconnected, if you can imagine when the custodians go in and move everything out, they're also disconnecting every single computer in the district. Tech goes in the last three weeks and reconnects them all back together again. Scheduling high school, Brown, Mullen, Brezneran, oversight, upgrade to the phone system. Those are maybe eight that I've read. He dumped out 25 in a matter of three moments and just hits send. There's more, but I get things to do. So I thank you to Don Scan and his staff. They are exceptional at what they do on our behalf. Steve Burgholm and his staff, again, you know Steve and his staff. We use SchoolDude to do all of our work orders. In order to get anything done, you have to sign on to SchoolDude and put in your work order. I'll just read a few of them. The projector in my classroom is too close to the screen. It needs to be moved back one ceiling tile, approximately. So that work order is completed. Water leaking from window or ceiling. We have, I need more shelves on a bookcase. That's where we get Richie involved. Clean out draft inducer. That's where we get that noise involved. The clock in my room needs to be reset. It's three hours fast. So if you think it's wrong in your classroom, all you have to do is sign on to SchoolDude. It creates a work order. We have a work order flow process that we use. As you can see, the buildings, the corridors, the floors, readiness there, once again, is just a phenomenal job on behalf of our custodial and maintenance staff. Nancy Lysick. Nancy Lysick has done an extraordinary job once again this summer. She is responsible for all databases in the district that involve EPUMs. You've heard me talk to you about the employee information management system from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. That ties into the student information management system that has all the demographics and students. That ties into the course schedule, what teachers are teaching. Are they highly qualified? When are they teaching it? What semesters? And the validations of this data all have to be done and linked without errors in order to do your student rollovers in order to start your next school year. Nancy has been, has done a yeoman's job in ensuring that those validations are on time and into the department, where and when ready. Transportation registrations. We've had five days of registration. We're down to our second waiting list. Once registration closed, we had one waiting list, sought a call for it. They were able to establish sheets for those children and those students. Now we're holding on to another waiting list, our second waiting list. So we're moving forward from that perspective. And if that wasn't enough, we said to Nancy, "Next year is one of these years that the calendar falls. There are 27 pays within the calendar year, but we only pay 26 pays." So we were slated to schedule our first teacher payroll on September 16th. And so teachers that were not expecting that, but were expecting a paycheck once they came back to school, we asked Nancy to change her entire payroll schedule into it two weeks earlier. So she yielded and did that work for us as well. So another wonderful summer season for Nancy as well. As well as, as Dr. Kerbel said, all the secretarial staff in the district between transitioning students, student representatives, entering new students, moving students along. They've done an incredible job keeping the buildings open this summer and getting things to where they need to be. So kudos to that team too. So your buildings are ready. We're ready. And we've got 10 more days, and we'll have 2,200 students at our door. So you're welcome.
I need anything additional. Do you have an executive session, please? No, no executive session.
I just have a question. So why are we standing here? Is that outdone, or is that like related in here?
The target date is October 1st.
Oh, okay, great. What was that question?
Wireless.
The wireless?
Okay. Sorry. Just had one quick little announcement. We did meet with those members of the school building committee who are not on the selection committee, are now, came together, half of them, and met last week, the week before. We talked about communication. How do we reach the community? We began brainstorming about how we're going to roll out the school building projects to the community. Talked about an awful lot of things. And part two of that is tomorrow night, because I couldn't get everybody there for one night. So I would invite school committee members who were not able to attend the first meeting we had to talk about communication. And certainly would like to work with the communications subcommittee of the school committee to have a, you know, stronger, you know, a different meeting with you about how we can work together to roll this amazing project we have before us out into the community. And finally, just to the community at large is that we are looking for a real broad section of people in the community who might be interested in stepping up and being part of this communication strategy of our school building needs. Whether you have children in the schools, whether you were a graduate of the schools, whether you're new to the community, a business member, anyone across the board who would like to be part of this process, I would appreciate receiving a phone call or an email, or you may call a member of the school committee, and they'll forward that information to me.
Okay, one more. This weekend, the NEF is sponsoring the first summertime family music festival, which is being sponsored by the Institution for Savings. It's on Sunday, August 28th, from 11:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Spencer Pierce Little Farm, which is in Newbury. There's going to be music. There are at least EJ Letten, Crazy Maggie, Liz Fram and the Kickers, Big Fair, Dos Pintos. You can get funky with Dos Pintos. They're going to be there. They're going to have a vintage baseball game. There'll be food and drinks. The Ipswich Ale truck is going to be there. It's a family-friendly event, so we really encourage people to get out there. Tickets are $30. And we thank the Institution for Savings for their continued sponsorship, and our huge thanks to the NEF.
And that there will be, EJ will be performing with Crazy Maggie, and I understand he's also going to have a number of young artists in his Young Artists Development Program.
Oh, cool.
Who will be attending his high school. And Dr.?
Yeah, I have one more. I was waiting for the next meeting, but I think I should say it now. Walked back in time to the place last week. Thank you to the reunion band and the shadows and Stillwater, and all the volunteers. I have their names. I'm going to give that all out to you. Just waiting to meet with them. I'm expecting a check from them for at least over $8,000. And then I'll turn it over to Deirdre,